Everybody, at this time, I will call the Tuesday, November 28, 2023, work session of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order and ask Commissioner Brooks Matthews to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and imocation.
All rise. Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity we have to be here to discuss the affairs and business of our county and our citizens. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve. We thank you for those who are willing to give their time and energy in the service of our citizens. We thank you for this Thanksgiving time of year that we have taken a break to give thanks for your many blessings. We just pray for the upcoming Christmas season and the time to remember the birth of your son and his sacrifice for us. We just pray your blessing on this meeting this morning and us in your service, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, and we will go ahead and get started and discuss award of the contract of the 2026 reappraisal. Ms. Christine Wallace, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, how are y'all? So today, at your request from the November 6 meeting, I worked in conjunction with our county's procurement specialist regarding the request for qualifications. We sent out the third request and once again emailed that request to the list of approved vendors on the Department of Revenue's website. The procurement specialist then reached out to each vendor by phone along with an email request asking for a response of submit or no submit of a proposal to ensure that all firms had an opportunity to respond. Of the 13 firms, we received no response from two vendors, either by email or by phone. Six vendors did not submit a response due to current workload, staffing levels, or they do not work with residential reappraisals. We did, however, receive five responses this time. I've placed a presentation on your desk to kind of follow along with the notes as we go through to make it easier. But each firm displays the ability to appraise property according to state and industry standards, but with limited county staff, the issue becomes a matter of logistics and project expectations. Of the five responses we received, I will share my thoughts regarding staffing needs, timeframes, and quality of services provided to the county. So bidder one listed in their RFQ that they have six staff members, including the owner. The bidder has only worked in six counties since 2014 to train staff on in-house appraisals and develop software redevelopment only. The firm has no local staff and is requesting the county's assistance in hiring and training the needed positions along with transportation to conduct site visits. This firm is also requiring the county supply the data entry staff, which would require additional positions in our office. Number two, this firm has only completed three countywide reappraisals in Bertie, Bladen, and Washington Counties, all that are substantially smaller than Harnett with significantly less commercial properties. The list of their 16 staff members consists of retired county employees and family members. There was no scope of work listed in the response, therefore leaving me no understanding of their processes and procedures for completing the reappraisal. So in following up on references, there was a current county client that did express some concerns with the firm's ability to have adequate staffing levels and their ability to complete the project on time. Bidder number three, although this firm has worked in two BTEC counties in North Carolina, most of their current work is in the state of Virginia, and their response stated that staffing will not be assigned until a contract is in place, leaving concerns as to the 13 employees listed in North Carolina to be able to complete the project. Data entry staff would work remotely and not be a part of the day-to-day operations, which could lead to miscommunication concerning assessments. In following up with references, there were multiple counties who stated that the firm was unable to complete the project on time, which led to the county staff being paid by the firm to work after business hours and on weekends. So it was also mentioned that during the appeals process, that citizen appeals were missed due to vendor communications on a personal cellphone, which resulted in those appeals not reaching the tax office and causing some confusion for citizens that were involved. Bidder number four, the firm has worked in one BTEC county software several years ago and currently has only one local staff member. There are no other local staff members listed as being current employees, and the firm would need to hire and train employees, and in doing so, they're requesting 60 days to hire staff for the project, which puts us further down the calendar. This does not include the training time either. Data entry staff would also need to work remotely. And lastly, this firm has not completed a reappraisal in central North Carolina or a project of a reappraisal of this capacity in the state of North Carolina at all. And then we have our final bidder, number five. This firm has 60-plus staff members, including 14 local to Harnett County, with a team ready to begin immediately. Data entry and management staff will work on site on a day-to-day basis, being in constant communication with myself and other county staff. The staff for this firm would need no software training, having worked in several other BTEC counties in the state in recent years, and the firm has the most experience in central North Carolina in such counties as Wake, Montgomery, Alamance, Guilford, Vance, Lenore. In following up with references, there were no concerns as to staffing, quality of work, or the ability to complete the project on time, and a letter of recommendation was also submitted by one of the firm's current clients stating the quality of work provided and the firm's ability to go beyond the bar in customer service. Other references indicated a strong work ethic and the ability to complete the task on time. The firm has also been completing all permit and new construction work in Harnett County for the past four years, therefore allowing the staff to be extremely familiar with our county's market, neighborhood types, and geographical layout. So in conclusion, I recommend the bidder number five, its evaluations be awarded the contract for the 2026 reappraisal. I look forward to working with a team who's fully staffed and holately trained and is able to complete this project in a timely manner. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from Ms. Wallace?
Ms. Wallace, I'd just like to thank you for your exhaustive effort in reaching out to touch base with all of those vendors who were listed or that were on the list of being qualified to do this work. And I think, I apologize that it had to go out a third time. I'll take responsibility for that in that I probably didn't communicate what I expected to see very well after the first time, which caused it to have to do it a third time rather than just a second time. So I apologize for that. But this is what I wanted to see, what kind of response we would get, and Mr. Chair, I have no problem going along with Ms. Wallace's recommendation for bidder number five.
I second that.
I agree with that.
So since it's not a voting meeting, would this be on the pleasure of the board to add this to the consent agenda for approval next week?
I think it's the pleasure of the board to recommend the most qualified company to do it, regardless of whether they did it in the past or what, they are the most qualified. So yes, I'm proud of you.
Hearing the pleasure of the board, we're going to go ahead and add this to consent agenda for next week for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discuss COVID and RSV vaccination rates, Mr. John Rouse.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here on behalf of the Health Department. My name is Gail Hobbs, and I'm requesting to establish the COVID and RSV vaccine rates. After September 23, the state no longer provides the COVID vaccines at no charge to the local health departments, so we are now going to order and bill for these. We also wish to establish the RSV vaccines to serve pregnant women between 32 and 36 weeks of pregnancy, as well as infants younger than eight months of age who are born shortly before or entering their first RSV season, which usually runs between October and February. And that's it.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Hobbs?
I have a question. What would be the cost for the vaccine?
They are listed.
They're listed here?
Yes, yes.
I just looked at it. So there's no problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Pleasure of the board.
Consent agenda is bound with me.
Pleasure of the board to accept these rates.
End of.
Seeing no objection, we'll go ahead and add this to consent agenda for next week for approval as well. Item number five, discuss the Historic Properties Commission ordinance, Mr. Christopher Appel.
Good morning, commissioners. We had previously discussed this potential change to the historic preservation ordinance of Harnett County regarding membership. So I've provided a few options and some language for your review. The first option would allow, so as it stands right now, the five members must represent each of the five districts. I had the language in that option one to say that the Board of Commissioners does not receive a qualified candidate for a specific district. The board may select an at-large member to fill the regular member vacancy. I did put a caveat in there that there would be no more than two regular members from the same district, taking into consideration some of the feedback I heard from that last meeting. And then the alternate members shall be at-large members. However, both alternates shall not reside in the same district unless the board does not receive qualified candidates. So that would be option number one. Option number two is essentially the same. The only thing I changed in that is allowing the alternate members to reside in the same district without any restrictions. So everything else is the same, where shall represent each of the five districts, but if you don't receive a qualified candidate, can do an at-large with no more than two from the same district. Option three allows a little bit more flexibility. That change in there is that the regular members should, should, not shall, should represent each of the five commissioners' districts, but commissioners may select no more than two qualified candidates from the same district. And then the alternate members shall be at-large, however, both alternates shall not reside in the same district. So that one is, by practice, should have five, but not bound by it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to hear some feedback. I can provide some additional options, but I figured based on some of the feedback we received last time, these were in line with what y'all wanted me to look at.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Appel? Or a preferred option commissioners would like to entertain?
And as you're thinking about that, I'll just let you all know, as I mentioned last time, if you want to make a change, there would have to be a notice and a public hearing held. The notice didn't go out or anything this week, so it would be at the next regular meeting later in December, so there'd be time for advertisement, and just want to give the board a heads up.
It'd be December 18th.
Yes, sir.
Is there a specific option that we would like to discuss, or would these options be discussed after the public?
Well, I was gonna, if the board wanted to go ahead and make a selection now to advertise to the public that we're going to go with this option, you can do that. If you want to put all three options up for public comment, you can, but that's your purview.
Pleasure of the board.
Number three, what would come in?
I prefer number three as well, I believe.
I hear in the opposition to putting option number three for a public hearing for adoption?
I'm reading.
Sorry, ma'am.
So based on number three, all members have to come from districts, right?
Well, based on option three, it should come from each district, but you can make a selection up to two in the same district. So it's not a requirement. So it doesn't, in the first two options, it just says you can only choose two from the same district if you don't receive qualified candidates. Option three allows a little bit more flexibility. It just says regardless, you can select up to two from the same district. It's not a matter of whether you receive qualified candidates or not, it's just you're allowed to choose up to two from the same district.
Okay, I understand. I'll go with number three.
Having a recommendation for option three for the proposed change, and hearing no objection, we'll go ahead and add this for a public hearing on December 18th in order to discuss the adoption of this change.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Discuss suspending the issuance of building permits in the Rawls Church Road area until certain safety concerns are addressed. Vice Chairman Morris, you want to pick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you know, we've had a great deal of discussion about that community and the expansion and growth up there. In our last meeting, we brought up the number of motor vehicle accidents at the Pine Grove Wilbur intersection and Rawls Church intersection, and you all should have gotten an email that showed there'd been 83 accidents in February of '22. But the question is, what do we do? We know Mr. Weatherston's gotten a letter from DOT stating that they funded a stoplight at Rawls Church, and they anticipate within a year of the design being finished, and we're assuming within the next year that it will be constructed. So do we let things lay, or do we suspend construction in that immediate area for the time being until some other method is done, such as a four-way stop? I wanted to put it on here for a discussion and see where we need to go with it.
Mr. Chair, picking up on what Commissioner Morris just mentioned there, and I do know, as Mr. Weatherston informed us last meeting, that DOT has plans to put a stoplight at Rawls Church and 401. My question is, can they not go and put a four-way stop there now until that stoplight is installed? They seem to be able to put them most everywhere else in the county. I mean, there's one at Old Stage and 55. I don't see a lot of difference between that intersection and 401 and Rawls Church. So that would be my question, and I don't have the answer to it, but maybe that's something we could run up to Flagpole with DOT. It certainly would help, I believe, maybe cut down on the number of accidents we're having at that intersection at this time.
Well, I received an email from Drew Cox this morning. For those that don't know, Drew Cox is the chief engineer for Division VI. As far as 401 and Rawls Church Road, based on the amount of traffic, DOT is recommending not to put a four-way stop at that intersection. When traffic volume goes over 7,500, and I think Rawls Church is at like 8,500 right now, according to DOT, there's more problems with always stops than what it can solve. I forwarded this email to each one of you. I would recommend, you know, looking at this email or maybe delay the discussion to the next work session. I mean, I think we need, I think the commissioners need to have all of the information that's available to them. One thing I want to find out is why the discrepancy in what the Highway Patrol shows as far as accidents and what DOT. Now DOT, they're showing frontal accidents and rear-end crashes. At Pine Grove Rawls Road, in the last three years, there's been 10 frontal impact crashes and 112 rear-end crashes. So at Rawls Church, there's six frontal crashes in the last year and 16 in the last three years. That would warrant an always stop if you didn't have the high traffic volume. But it's, you know, and I guess trying to see which department it is that makes these recommendations. I don't see it right off the top of my head, but this email is very informative. And I will say that I know the report you sent out, Commissioner Morris, was from State Highway Patrol, and according to what DOT is telling me, they use highway patrol. I don't know what those other crashes were. I mean, maybe if we could get some clarification as to what all the different crashes are.
Was it from the same timeframe? The one I presented was, I think, February of '22.
I think theirs goes back, DOT's goes back three years, I believe.
That may account for the additional risks.
Part of it is three years.
Either way, there's been a great deal of them.
Well, I'm going to err on the side of the citizens. And that is to say, I know the road, I know the area, and there needs to be something there if we're going to continue to, for the developers to build these houses in this area. There's just so much this county can take with the traffic. And so when it comes to the traffic, I think we should err on the side of the citizens. If you want to wait and see what another report reveal, that's fine, but something needs to be done in that area because it's highly traffic area. I have been on that road. From 3:00 to 6:00, it's very difficult getting back to, from Fairway to Littleton. So if you want to look at some more studies, fine. And another thing, if we're going to do this for Rawls Church Road, we're going to set a precedent here, which needs to be studied on a lot of these other roads, which we are supposed to be looking at. And I'm just saying what I feel, and I'm erring on the side of the citizens. This county is being stacked with nothing but rooftops. That's fine, we have no control over development and progress, but we do have control over trying to put something in place for the citizens in this county. I live in town. Same thing goes for living in town. You can't even get out of Littleton. And to sit up here and say, the problem doesn't exist. Citizens can see it. If you want to wait and see another study, that's fine, but I'm saying something has to be done in that area. We can't continue to keep building and housing of families and not think of their safety. That's all I got to say.
So I agree with what Commissioner McCoy said. However, I've not heard anyone say that there's not a problem. We all recognize that there's a problem there, and we're all trying to find the best solution. So to say that we're not, that we're turning a blind eye to it, I think that's very incorrect because we've been working very hard to try to find a solution to it.
I don't think the solution is kicking can down the road. Something has to be done. That's the only thing I'm saying. And I think that we, as commissioners, have to put our hands together and find the best solution.
I agree with that. I think we have to work with DOT to come up with the best solution.
I can jump in for a second. I'd like to echo some of the same sentiments that Commissioner McCoy just said. We had several public hearings where constituents got up and had voiced their opinion, especially on this area with traffic and their concerns and how it's growing. So this matter of discussion is about putting a building permit moratorium in the area, which allows our local jurisdiction, our governing body, this is one of the police powers that we are able to enact. And seeing that the DOT's proposed project isn't going to be completed until 2025, I do agree with Commissioner McCoy that we should do something prior to then. So I'll leave that open for more discussion. But with 8,500 people or 8,500 on the traffic count, that's definitely a public health, safety, and welfare concern.
I'd like to hear from Mark Glock there about the moratorium and also from our legal department concerning the moratorium.
Chris and I had this discussion yesterday, and I'm gonna let him lead the way. We've kind of went back and forth, and he's got more of the legal side of the moratorium. And basically, what it, what it means, you know, the, the hoops you have to jump through and all the different things that it requires. Uh, the law's very specific when it comes to moratorium, and, and you have to have, um, several different things in order to put one in place. And, and I think we can do that, that's not a problem, that's just, you just, like you said, we just need to know what it means. I'll let Chris come in.
Right, and commissioners, in your packet was a memo that I put together. So, you have authority issue, as mentioned, the authority to issue a moratorium under, uh, two authorities, police powers and your statutory, uh, authority. Now, the police powers is reserved for immediate health, um, and safety issues. Um, and, uh, those should be used in extraordinary circumstances because it doesn't require a public hearing, and you're, you're putting an immediate moratorium on it. Uh, I think the, the more common route for any moratorium that's put in place is through statutory, your statutory authority through one sixty-D dash one oh-seven. As Mr. Lock there pointed out, there are, i- if you want to move forward with it, there are just things you have to follow. So, uh, first and foremost, it has to be, um, specific, uh, has to be reasonable in light of the specific conditions, can't exceed the period of time necessary to correct the conditions, and then you have to adopt those, those statements, uh, that I list out. There's four statements that you have to adopt, so, you know, the problems and conditions necessitating moratorium, uh, the development approval is subject to the moratorium, a date of termination, you have to list a specific date of termination, it can't be open-ended, and the actions and schedule for that, those actions proposed to be taken during the moratorium to address the problems. And then the other, uh, item too is, if a moratorium is enacted, there are exemptions. So, uh, those that would not be subject to a moratorium would be if a valid building permit was already issued, if a special use permit application has been accepted, uh, site-specific vesting plan, a de, a development for which substantial expenditures have been made in good faith, and a preliminary or final subdivision plot that has been accepted for review by the county. So, a good example would be this, let's take, for example, Serenity. Um, since that's already an approved subdivision, um, we couldn't, you couldn't issue a moratorium to stop any further construction in that neighborhood or any other neighborhoods. I just used that one because I know that it's in a close vicinity. So, as Mr. Lock there stated, this can be done, we just have to be specific, we'll have to, if you want to move forward this, we'll have to do the specific area that you would want to do a moratorium in, the specific date, and then we'll have to adopt those statements, and we'll have to work on those. And then depending on the length of the moratorium depends on how long we have to advertise it for a public hearing.
Okay, having, having said all that, and thank you for researching it.
Yes, sir.
Um, what suggestions do you have? I mean, we've got a, we've clearly got a problem, everybody's in agreement on that, and the question is what to do. Okay, and I'm, I'm all ears, so if, if you and Mark got an idea, I'd love to hear. Um, this discussion was put on here because of the number of wrecks and the complete outrage of the community up there. Now, if I'm reading the text right here, we would have to identify a certain area, say a two, just for purpose of discussion, a two-mile circle around Rawls Church. Okay, then you can only do sixty days.
Well, you, well, you could do more than that. The sixty days on there is just if the moratorium is more or less, depends on your, your notice that you have to publicize it. So, you could do a six-month moratorium, you could do twelve months, anything over twelve months tends to get a little hairy, you have to really, um, you.
You're crossing the line into a permanent arrangement if you go more than.
Correct, the, the courts are skeptical when you start getting over a year, so obviously the shorter period of time, the less ri, risk you're taking in doing moratorium, the more, the longer, obviously, the, the, the bigger the risk, so. Um, you know, suggestion-wise, I think what would be good is to maybe look at this, maybe go th, in my opinion, go through that report a little bit and figure out the, all the accidents in that specific area, and try to figure out what's an appropriate circle. Um, you know, a ti, because obviously we have to work on what, what's a timeline of resolving the issue, so getting more definitive answers from DOT, get a, a set schedule. So, I think it would take a little bit more research to identify what would be an appropriate moratorium, if that's what the, the commissioners would like to do.
That's where I was headed with this, is it's not, it's not gonna do any good to put on a sixty-day moratorium if DOT's gonna stand on a year or more to begin construction. What I want to see here is the project get moved to the front, because everybody in this room knows all it takes is one phone call from the governor, and we may get moved up or we may get moved down the line. Not, and that's no reflection on Mr. Cox, he's doing what he's told on his best judgment and communications that he has. So, give me, give me some thoughts on what we can do, gentlemen.
Yeah.
We're all experts in the field.
I think, I think you kind of take it as, if you look at the specific area, if you're, if you're talking about those specific intersections, and that's our problem right now. I think that's an issue, and that's obviously what's before you. Then you have the whole greater issue of growth in Harney County in this area. And, and so, if, if we look at it just at what's in front of us today, those two intersections, we have, you have, the good news is we have, help is kind of on the way, it's just not coming fast enough. So, I think that we have to have a legitimate discussion with DOT to see about expediting those projects and trying to get that to happen sooner rather than later. So, um, one suggestion that I, I think is, I have a meeting, and Commissioner Nichols aware is this, aware of this meeting, that I was looking to meet with DOT to talk about transportation and the way that we do business as a whole, because of all the issues that we've been having, um, with our last meeting last Monday night and all that. I called, I called DOT the next morning, and I said, "Hey, we gotta, we gotta do something different." So, um, that meeting's scheduled for December twelfth. Um, right now, it's planned for myself, Commissioner, Chairman Nichol, and County Manager, and, and Assistant County Manager to be there. That also co, happens to coincide with a work session that day. I think it might be a good idea for us to take back the information, some of your comments today, the stop signs, the four-way stops, um, potent, the potential of expediting the project and all that good stuff, and let's take it back to DOT and maybe have them come back before this, or at that work session if they're willing to, and maybe give us their recommendations. Um, that's just something that can happen sooner rather than later, because the meeting is December twelfth, and that's in two weeks. So, uh, and it's already scheduled. So, that's kind of, that's what the initial recommendation is, because like I've said a thousand times, standing at this podium and all the other podiums, we're at the mercy of DOT when it comes to transportation issues. Um, we, we have to follow their lead, um, but I think that we should have some say in that, and I think that's what, I think that's what we're all seeing loud and clear today, so.
And Vice Chairman, another thing too, in looking at having these meetings as well, is needing to satisfy, number one, because you have to look at what other alternative courses, if any, there are, to resolve the issue. So, I guess what we have to do is look at is, is there anything short of stopping all building permits? Would a temporary zoning hold suffice where you don't allow rezonings to, to denser? Or is it only going to be resolved by stopping all construction right now? So, kind of teasing through those options to make sure it's satisfied, number one, as well.
And the other comment I would make is, we know that there are a couple of commercial sections right there at that intersection, and we know that there is some potential work in the near future as it relates to one of those parcels, has already been stated to us, so do we want to withhold any commercial growth at that location or only residential? And try to determine whether that's an impact as well that we can deal with and accept, or is it, is it just the residential that we want to stop?
Sure, and that's, I, I don't know that the commercial growth's gonna be enough to affect it either way, so we can probably let it go on. Bottom line is, is it sounds like that you're recommending that we wait till the twelfth. Here, what DOT, DOT's gonna be here in person, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
That's their statement to us.
They were scheduled to meet with us in just a normal meeting a, after this meeting, but we can certainly go back and ask them if they don't mind talking to these.
If we don't do this today, I intend to make a motion on the twelfth, unless they come in and convince us to otherwise, because it is a dangerous situation, and there is a complete uproar in the community up there.
Well, I would like to say this, I don't know if it's possible, but, but I do know we have, excuse me, in the past, we have had DOT to come before the board and, uh, and address these, not this issue, but issues similar to it, you know, fixing the road or something like that. I think that, depending on how the meeting goes, uh, on the twelfth, the DOT, we need to set a meeting with DOT, with the, uh, the Board of Commissioners, all of us, except for calls, all of us are responsible for the safety of our citizens in this county. And, uh, at the rate that, uh, the rooftops are being built here, you need to think about, you know, these are families, and we got to provide safety for them as well as, uh, for ourselves too. So, you know, we'll see what happens in, on December the twelfth, but what's happening in Harney County, I think all the commissioners should have a meeting at some point, because it's the responsibility of all of us, it's not, it's not you and one or two of them.
We'll work to get them to be able to come to the actual work session on the twelfth, and then if, after that meeting, there needs to be a further discussion, um, with one or two members, uh, or in series, we'll do that. But I think, uh, it, it's obvious that we need to have them here, and if they're already intending it, it'd be better to have it at the work session itself and ask the individual questions directly to the members during the meeting.
If it's the pleasure of the board, would you contact them and express that we'd like to have them here in person on the twelfth?
Will do.
For the meeting, while not just your administrative meeting.
Right, alright, sounds good.
I mean, everybody's okay with that?
I, I also probably can take this time, I, I mentioned, you know, Harney County's growth as a whole too, and you asked, what, what can we do, you know, for that too? We're, we're, we're going through the, the comprehensive growth plan right now. The best advice that I can give everybody is to let your voice be known. We're gonna be having a meeting soon, we've already had multiple, matter of fact, there's two going on today, right now, um, that we're hosting today for makeups, just in case folks missed it. Um, spread the word, we need to hear what people think in these, in these pockets, and then that way, when we do the land use plan, that'll be our guiding light, that'll tell us, this is the way we want to grow. Because honestly, the way we're growing up in that area is what the 2015 plan told us last time. So, um, it's just, you know, the roads aren't keeping up with it, and that, that, that's completely understandable, all those are legitimate complaints that can, that the citizens have. But the best way, um, we've, we've made the investment for that type of plan, and I think that it's important that we champion that type of plan, and that we actually, you know, folks, send folks to that. Um, I'm gonna send Brent a, um, uh, some dates to where we're gonna be meeting with you all, one-on-one, to hear these things. Um, so those dates will be coming out soon, because we've kind of spoke to a lot of the stakeholders, we still got community meetings and things like that, there's still a lot of that to go. But the next step that we're gonna have is going to be meeting with you all specifically, so, so we can hear how you feel one-on-one. So, just, I just want to put that on your radar and let you know that, that those things are coming, so.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate that, except for calls, what we're seeing up there, we're seeing in many different areas in this county. So, I think that's a good plan.
Yeah. Mark, I, I'd as well appreciate you bringing that, or mentioning that this morning, as, as I am telling everyone who expresses concerns to me about residential development, that now is the time to voice their opinions, to get involved, uh, in these stakeholder meetings. The land use plan will form the foundation for subsequent zoning and subsequent growth and everything else that comes along with it, and I think we've got to get that message out. Uh, I definitely, as you mentioned, remember when the last one was developed, and the goal of that plan was for development in that 401-210 corridor, and that's what we're seeing. So, that is a prime evidence that it drives the, it drives what happens in a county, and so that's why we need folks to be involved, and so I appreciate you bringing that up. Thanks.
Absolutely, and, and the recommendations out of that plan will be, hey, raise your standards, or, or lower your, or change things, change the way you do business in this areas and maybe not this area. So, there's gonna be all kinds of things that'll happen there, so.
Any other questions or comments? I hear in the pleasure of the board is to go ahead and, um, add an item for discussion on December twelfth with, uh, DOT and members.
Mm-hmm.
We'll go ahead and add that, Madam Clerk. Yeah. Approval of amendment for additional wastewater capacity purchased to the town of Fuquay Marina, Mr. Steve Ward. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have two items to go over with, uh, this morning with you. Um, you've been discussing transportation, infrastructure, or the lack of it, and, um, I just want to reassure you that the county is preparing for wastewater and water infrastructure in a big way to accommodate this growth that we're seeing, and this is what I'm here before you this morning to discuss. The first matter is, um, a formal agreement or an amendment to an existing wastewater agreement between the county and town of Fuquay Marina. The board approved this amendment, which formalizes the purchase of additional wastewater capacity in the planned expansion of the North Harney wastewater treatment plant. Um, they executed that agreement last Tuesday, so it is before you now for your review. Um, pretty straightforward, uh, Lillington and Anger, um, the board approved those, um, last month. So, if you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Ward? Do you have, uh, here we go. Can you elaborate a little bit more on exactly what the change is from the last agreement?
Sure, um, well, the, the last agreement, which was from nineteen ninety-nine, if I remember, um, actually set forth kind of where we are now. Uh, when we built the original plant there, we built a, um, the existing plant, a seven-and-a-half MGD, so we, when we made that original agreement in nineteen ninety-nine with the town, we knew they would be, um, we would be upgrading the plant over time, since it served not only the county, but Fuquay and Anger and the town of Lillington as well. So, so it was written in that agreement that they could expand in the future, so this amendment just lays out the terms of that expansion. They're take, they're going from, uh, two-point-six MGD in the current plant to six, which is what the contract allows for. So, um, and if you've been in Fuquay lately, you know why. Um, they're just like us, that whole region is growing, expanding tremendously. I think Fuquay has close to fifty thousand people now in it, which is, you know, if you're from this area, that's unimaginable from what we remember twenty-five years ago.
They almost have as much as Western Harney does. Alright, any other questions or comments for Mr. Ward? Pleasure to the board.
Consent agenda.
Your recommendation to put this on the consent agenda, is there any objection to that? Go ahead and add this consent agenda for next week, Madam Clerk. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I have you up again to discuss the award in Northwest Wastewater Treatment Plant Capacity Upgrade Project, sir.
Okay, I would like to say I'm happy to be here to bring this before you, it's been a long time coming. We've been preparing for getting to this stage of, of development of the upgraded plant for over two-and-a-half years. So, um, we held the, uh, bid opening on Thursday, November the ninth, we were happy that we received five bids at that time, which is pretty great considering the current construction bidding environment. And, um, the bids were higher than we wanted, and I think that most people are in the same boat. Um, so, um, anyway, the, the plant was projected to cost a hundred and four million, a hundred and twenty-one thousand, or that's what the bids came in at. You can see, I've attached a bid tab for your review as well, as long, as, as well as a bid recommendation from the engineer to give you more detail. So, of those five bids, four of them were within five million dollars of each other, which is pretty remarkable when you consider the total price tag of a hundred and four million. So, you had really five percent separating four of those bids. There was one kind of outlier that got substantially higher than the others. Um, that's two lowest bids, there was only about a half million dollars difference, which is really remarkable. So, we feel like we got good prices based on our plans, and I would like for the board to, um, uh, consider awarding this. We feel really good about it. The other thing is, unlike a lot of communities who are gonna be using ARPA money, and we will be using ARPA money for this, uh, the county's got about twenty-four million dollars in grant funds. Our. Our cost is gonna be approximately $47 million for the plant. And I can go into more detail about what the cost would be for other communities. I provided that in your packet as well to give you an idea of the total cost of the project. So, but as I was saying, the good thing about it is we're ready to go. We shouldn't have any problem expending the ARPA funds before the end of 2026 deadline. I think a lot of communities are gonna bump up against that. And that's really gonna be difficult because they're all scrambling to get projects ready to go. And we were on board with this early, so everything's approved and, and we're ready to go. So all we're, if the board awards at the first meeting in December, then we'll begin actual contract review. Chris and his staff will. And hopefully, we can get a notice to proceed early in 2025. With construction beginning in earnest, probably sometime in February.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Ward? Pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I would recommend we put this on as a separate item for our, our voting meeting next week.
Any objection to adding this as a separate item for next week? Go ahead and add this as a separate item for discussion next week, please, Madam Clerk? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Discuss the recommended capital improvement plan. Ms. Lisa McFadden, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Like I said last week, we have a lot of projects that we need to go through, so I hope you have some snacks. So we're not gonna go over everything in the presentation, but we will cover mostly the new projects. We'll just touch on the current projects, future projects and completed projects. So the overview, we'll just talk about our process, our funding strategies, what the document, what we're gonna cover on that, the projects and our next steps. So right now, our CIP, it's not legally required. But if we do have one, the manager is charged with putting it together or his designee. And as a board, you will adopt project ordinances and establish capital reserves. And a CIP is just a plan and it does not authorize our spending. So when we budget our projects, we do that in the operating budget. And if we do it that way, it's because we can complete the project with one, within one fiscal year. And if it's gonna take us more than one fiscal year, we'll create a project ordinance. So our CIP is our long-term plan. It's a way of getting everything in one location so we can plan ahead. And it's just our, ours is our seven-year plan. And it just shows how all our projects that are $100,000 or more are scheduled out over those next seven years. Our CIP includes projects for CCCC, Hornet County Schools, and all county departments except for Hornet Regional Water. And they have their own pro, their own CIP because it's a 10-year plan. We update it manually or every, every fall. But it's changed throughout the year depending on what projects are happening. Projects are submitted by the departments, Hornet County Schools and Central Carolina. And we go through a process of vetting these projects with internal departments to make sure that when departments submit projects, they know what needs to be included in the projects. And then it's reviewed by our management team. Our CIPs, they're based on today's dollars and then inflated, based on the inflation rate over the next seven years. Before we recommend these projects, we have identified a funding source for them. And the future projects that are included, we know that those are important. We know that they're coming up eventually. But right now, we don't have a funding source identified. The project scope hasn't been defined well enough, or we don't have a valid cost estimate. We do work on developing a funding strategy. And so if we're able to apply for grants, we do that. We also look at the projects over the next seven years. And we try to develop a pay-as-you-go strategy. So what that means is, we know that projects come and we want to set money aside in a capital reserve fund. So when that project does come up, we're able to pay for it. And we're able to reserve our debt capacity for larger projects like schools. So you can see at the top part of this page, it's got a page number for funding summary. That's gonna correspond to what is in the document itself. So we're not gonna go in order of the document, but just based on the highlights. So the funding summary, this table shows the funding sources of the CIP projects by year. On page 15 is the operating impacts. And this shows what kind of effect it's gonna happen, or what's gonna happen to the operating budget based on these recommended projects over the next seven years. The Reader's Guide, this just shows us how, what each of the sections on the project detail is. It gives you a description. The Action Summary, this is what we're actually gonna look at and how we're gonna go through the projects. And it's based on the discretion you have as a board to change things. So back in, I mean, April, when we were going through our budget process, Board of Education gave us their list of facility needs. And on page two, it shows how the CIP is gonna address these needs. And with each of the new recommended projects and future projects, we have tied those to the county strategic goals, and those are listed here. So before we jump into the projects, do you have any questions on our, the way we do our CIP process? Okay, the first section is our completed projects. And these are the projects that are completed in fiscal year '23 and in '24. We want to show you the ones that were completed in fiscal year '23. Those happen to be the ones that may have been, from the time we presented all these projects last year through the end of June 30th. So we want you to be aware of those as well. The first one is the Viper radio replacement, and that was $5.6 million. And all radios have been delivered, programmed and installed. And this project was completed in August. The old jail demolition, that was completed in April of 2023 for about $525,000 and it was under budget. The Hornet County Schools camera upgrade. And that was an upgrade of 475 interior and exterior cameras at 13 schools. And that project was completed in Au, in August. The next one is the Detention Center Video Surveillance System upgrade. That was completed in March of 2023, and that came in under budget at about $304,000. Next one is the Mobile Medical Unit. That was 100% grant-funded for about $360,000, and we received that in May of 2023. Next one is the Fiber Extension Project. That was completed in June, and it also came under budget at about $150,000. The Anderson Creek Park Development. The construction of the mountain biking trails and parking lot was completed in September of 2023. And that was using SCIF funds for about $207,000. The next one is the Wield Excavator Replacement. That was delivered in June of 2023, and it's in operation. And that was about $366,000. The Tax Office Billing and Collection Software. That project was completed in July, and the tax bills were issued using Bitech software in August of 2023. And that one also came in a little under budget at about $262,000. The new Northwest Hornet Elementary School project. I'm including that here because it was substantially complete in August of 2023 when the school opened. Right now, there's still some site work on the retention pond and a few other punch list items are in progress. Do y'all have any questions on the completed projects? Okay, so the next set of projects, these have been approved in a prior CIP or by another action. And in the first group, it's the ones that have had a main contract already executed. So as I go through all the approved projects, since there's a bunch, I'll just give you a status update on those, if that's okay with you. So the Broadband Expansion Initiative Project. We will finish up Phase One in December of 2023. And Phase Two is currently under review with Cloudwise, and that should begin in early 2024, around January. And Phase Two's gonna address the broadband in western part of the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks to Ira. The next one is the Johnsonville Elementary School Phase One Expansion and Renovation. So right now, the dining area, the cafeteria was substantially completed in August. The kitchen itself is still under construction. But in building number one, the windows were installed in September, and 80% of the site work has been completed. Paving, it was expected to be completed late this month. The next one is the Apron Expansion. This project is in its final stages. They're waiting on the grass growth plan to be within the specs of the FAA and the project contract. So once that's done, they'll be able to close out the project, and that's expected in December. The Jetport Master Plan. That has been submitted to the National, or the North Carolina Division of Aviation for review and approval, and we are still waiting to hear back from them. The new terminal construction. That was about 55% complete as of October. I'm sure we're further along than that now, but we're waiting on the certificate of occupancy, and that's expected sometime in December to January. And once that happens, we'll be able to move into the building. They'll be able to remove all the temporary buildings and start working on the parking lot. And then it's expected to be completed by April of 2024. The Ben Haven Community Park Redevelopment Project. The ballfield grading and fencing is complete, and they're working on the infield and the baseball fields. The playground and picnic shelter were finished in September, and signage around the park will be finalized soon. The Niels Creek Restroom Concession and Maintenance Building. The design of the building was completed in August, and the construction is expected in December with a completion date in April of 2024. The Shawtown Community Park. Right now, the signage and additional park benches are being installed, and this project should be completed next month. Any questions on those?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you have a timeframe when the project for the Johnsonville Cafeteria will be completed?
Well, the cafeteria, the John, the dining area was complete. They're still waiting on the kitchen to be completed. I think Commissioner Matthews may be able to help on that one. I know they were having some issues with contracting stuff in the kitchen area.
Yeah, there's a, currently, there's a dispute regarding the kitchen equipment and some damage that was caused to the equipment. So, still waiting on resolution between the Health Department, the schools and the contractor.
How long has that project been going on?
Too long.
I guess that's right.
You know, I, I wish I had a better answer. We, we've had a myriad of problems to arise. And thankfully, Phase Two, which is involving Estor dollars, we, you know, and we've got a timeline on that. I think that's going to, that's the new classroom building. I think that's going to, I think we may make it there, but I don't want to jinx this. But it'll be down to the wire, but we're still struggling with Phase One, which included a cafeteria.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The next set of projects are the ones that have been approved in a prior CIP or another action, but they do not have a main contract executed. So the first one is the Ben Haven School renovation. The Early College opened up in January of 2023, and the Ben Haven Branch Library is expected to open in January. So once we're done with that, we're gonna close this project out and call it Phase One. We still have some renovation projects that we need to do out there. And once those are ready to move forward, we'll create that as a Phase Two. Department of Social Services, the second floor upfit. The project ordinance for this was approved in October, and the design work is expected to be completed in December. And the project is expected to be finished next December. Next one is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So this was approved in, back in April. And they began working on it with some sub consultants in July, Stuart Incorporated did. And so this project is expected to be completed by late spring. The Emergency Viper Radio Replacement, and this one is for the municipal police department. So right now, we have received all the portable radios, and those will start getting programmed around the third week in December. We're still waiting on the mobile radios to come in. But once those come in, we'll start programming those and getting those distributed as well. Next one is the Emergency Medical Services Capital Reserve Appropriation. We're gonna continue an annual contribution to their capital reserve, but we're gonna ask for an increase this year from $690,000 to 1.1 million. And that's because of the cost of ambulances have really gone up over the last three years. And so we're also adding another project for them, which is the stretcher project. And we'll talk about that one in a minute. So in order to fund all of their capital needs over the next seven years, we need to contribute 1.1 million dollars a year. Next project is the Cardiac Monitors. There's no change in this project because it's asked to be funded in fiscal year 2027. Next one is the Convalescent Transport Unit Replacement. This is replacing one unit every fiscal year. So this is gonna be seven units over the next seven years, and it's 1.6 million dollars. Next one is the Emergency Transport Unit Remounts. And this is remounting seven units over the next seven years. And that will cost almost $2 million. And this is cheaper than purchasing new ambulances. We're remounting, which is replacing the chassis and renovating the box on the back of the ambulance. The next one is the Emergency Transport Unit Replacement. And this is replacing five units over the next seven years for 2.1 million. The next one is the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund. This was established last year and for facility maintenance to start working on and addressing our maintenance needs for the county. So we, last year, we contributed $500,000. We're asking for that again. And in fiscal year '25, this will, they'll address two chillers at the detention center. Also for facility maintenance is the HVAC control upgrades and standardization in multiple locations. This was a future project for a couple of years, but it has recently been approved. And we're just waiting on the contract finalization to go through. And this will upgrade the controls in the health signs, tax register deeds, courthouse and government complex buildings. The next one is the Hornet County Schools Electronic Door Locks. These are the exterior doors are currently being replaced at 17 schools, and the project is expected to be completed in May of 2024. The Hornet County Schools Maintenance Fund. This is contributing, continue to contribute 1.4 million dollars to address their mechanical systems, windows, roof replacements, any of their maintenance needs. And I work with Steve Matthews with the school system every year, and he has a laid-out plan over the next seven years of what needs to be addressed. And for fiscal year '25, it's two underslapped sewer systems, one ruin, one roof recoding, and to expand and replace multiple building automation systems. Next one is the Weapons Detection System. This is This is, these systems are installed in twenty-nine schools and the central office. This started, they were purchased in September, they started being installed in October, and they should be completed late this fall. The next one is the Harney County Sheriff's Capital Reserve Fund, and this is to continue the annual contribution of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is used, this is how they pay for their vehicles and other capital items. Next one is the core server infrastructure upgrade and replacement. This is an ongoing project that occurs every four years that we have to replace this hardware. So last year was the year that we first put it into the CIP, but we want to make sure that it's ongoing, and in fiscal year twenty-seven, we need to do it, it's going to be close to a million dollars. Next one is the Boone Trail Park Development Phase One, and this is where they're going to stabilize and rebuild or rebuild the entryway. Right now, the design firm has been selected, and the drawing process will take about three and a half months once they get started, and so hopefully, that will be soon, once the contracts get routed.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
On this project here, the citizens in that area, they are, they're raising money to help fund this project too, right?
No, not that I'm aware of, because right now, the money that was used for this was the SCIF funds, just for the, the monument. I know that that community has talked about fundraising to do other future projects in that area, but the monument was, is being paid for out of the SCIF funds.
That's the, that's the frame part.
Yes.
The county's paying for that.
Well, from our state grant funds.
From our state grant fund.
Yeah.
Wonder now. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if y'all have any questions as we get to those projects, go ahead and feel free to jump in and ask any questions. So the Cape Fear Shiner Park Development Phase Two, there's no change in this project right now because it's going to be over a two-year implementation, and so that's going to construct a playground, picnic, shelter, and restroom facility. The capital reserve appropriations for parks and rec, and this is the annual contribution of two hundred thousand dollars to the capital reserve fund, and the current projects include the development of the Shawtown Community Park and Ben Haven Community Park right now. Next one is the Greenway Trail Construction Capital Reserve Appropriations, and this is contributing a hundred thousand dollars each year to this fund in order to provide grant matches for Greenway construction. And according to the state, it's about one million dollars per mile to construct Greenway. The Niels Creek Park Development Master Plan and Park Development Phase One, Weathers Ravenel was hired to develop a master plan for Niels Creek Park, and that is estimated to be completed in April. The Northwest Hornet Park Development, there's no change in this project. In fiscal year twenty-five, they're going to develop a site master plan, and once that's done, we'll move forward with Phase One to determine what needs to be done first. Patriot Park Development Phase Three, this was for the restroom facility. Finance is actually posting the RFQ for the design and construction drawing today, so we're hoping to get that started by January. The Ben Haven Branch Library, the construction or the renovation has been complete, furniture and shelving are currently being installed, and that should be done sometime in December, and we're anticipating the opening date as January the eighth, 2024. The Northwest Convenience Center relocation, the erosion and sedimentation control plan was submitted and approved, and we have received that permit, and the department is moving forward right now with a procurement process. Do I have any questions on the currently approved projects?
Well, she's listening.
So the next section is the new projects. These have not been approved in a previous CIP, and, but a few of them were future projects, so we have fourteen of these being recommended, and we'll talk a little bit more about these. The first one is the animal shelter replacement. The feasibility study was done by the Shelter Planners of America, and we received that last October. We received a new updated cost estimate in January of this year, which was about nine point two million dollars, but that depends on where we put it. Options of the location are still being discussed, but the nine point two million is on the high end. Central Carolina Community College Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund, since we have one of these for the school systems, we have one for the county, we would like to establish one for Central Carolina Community College as well. They have several renovation projects coming up, and they're also included in the CIP, so we know what they're needing in twenty-seven and fiscal year thirty, so we want to start setting money aside now so we can pay for that when those projects come up. So one of those is the Etheridge Building renovations. They're asking for this in fiscal year thirty, and it's going to be about one point nine million. This building's been occupied since nineteen ninety-six, and they need some, well, actually, this one was ninety-one, and this, they need some new paint, updated flooring, ceiling tiles, LED lighting, and enhanced fire alarm system. And John Matthews sent me some pictures, and this right here came from the Etheridge Building as of yesterday. And I have a lot more of those. The next one is the Mariello HVA system replacement, and this is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and we would like to go ahead and move forward with this project this fiscal year because they've had some issues. They've had five original HVA systems in that building, they've already had to replace two, and they want to go ahead and replace the origin, the other original three, and that will be two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And the next one is the Mariello renovations. They're asking for this one to be done in fiscal year twenty-seven, and it's going to be a little over one point six million. Same thing as the other renovation project, new paint, flooring, ceiling tiles, new lighting, and a fire alarm system. So the next one is the county morgue. We'd like to construct an eight hundred square foot morgue to store up to sixteen bodies. So the county is, counties in North Carolina are required to have a morgue. Right now, we contract with Betsy Johnson for our morgue services, but their morgue is actually becoming too small for the growth in our county. So what we would like to do is construct our own morgue, and based on research that the county staff has done, we can do that for a little less than four hundred thousand dollars.
You have a location? Do you have a location?
Yes, it's going to be right where the old jail, right where we did, had the old jail, we're going to construct it right there at EMS, because that's basically who, who's going to be staffing it as well.
That was my next question. Going to build this monument, who's going to look after it? Who's going to operate it? Who's going to be there for body intake?
So it's going to be EMS. You don't have to have any kind of special certification, it's really checking in bodies and checking out bodies. So they don't, right now, we don't think we're going to need to hire any additional staff, they'll be able to do it with the staff that's there right now.
And we're going to build, what we did is we made, myself and Chris Johnson made a road trip to Randolph County. Randolph County Emergency Services operates their own, and we're basing this design off of theirs. I've got all their procedures, which basically, they created on their own, because again, the state has no requirements except for the temperature in the cooler, that's it. So we're looking at having myself, my administrative staff, and my EMS supervisors at around twenty-four hours a day to be able to receive those bodies, and then to also check them out to funeral homes or up for autopsy.
You're planning on your twenty-four hour staff?
Yeah. Using our, our current twenty-four hour staff that we've got right now, my supervisors.
I was picturing in my mind, you were digging a fire somewhere, going to be tied up for ten or twelve hours, somebody needs to deposit a body.
No, we'll, we'll always have an EMS supervisor out there that, that's on shift twenty-four hours a day, and I can train different staff members too, so.
What's going on?
And myself.
What's going on in this? And every community that now is much needed, Harney County?
Yeah, we're growing.
A couple of other things that I wanted to mention related to this one is that we, the other option that we had was to partner with Betsy Johnson, in other words, pay a portion of the cost. We feel this is a much more cost-effective option compared to the expenses they were looking at for us to do it. And in addition, there is a savings in operating costs. We currently, from our Health Department, pay the hospital to provide this service, so we will save some money on that part as well.
And the state will also reimburse us for those, transport of those bodies that we do now to that, to our morgue, so we'll get those costs reimbursed also.
So, got another issue, experiencing years going by, so John Doe passes away, we've got transporting morgues, are we going to have a contractor?
There, there's, it's, there's, there's two ways to do that. It can be our staff, our non-emergency transport, and we also use some contractors that are out there that the state pays for.
Having been on the other side of that.
Yes.
Reason why I brought it up is one, we don't want to overburden your EMS staff calling the bodies around, but I've also been the deputy, had to stand out there and wait four, five hours for somebody to show up, back when we had contractors.
And we'll be able to work that both ways, kind of like what we're doing right now. We've got contractors and my, and my non-emergency transport folks actually moving too, and then my one oh two, one oh three supervisors move them also, so.
You can see that's a concern.
Now, we've, we've looked at all that, and we, with the amount of bodies that we would have coming in, most of the ones that would be a law enforcement type of scene where we're holding a body are going to go directly to, to the state morgue anyways for autopsy. So we've looked at all that. We've had some pretty good conversations with Randolph, they've been a really good partner in this, and I'm sharing data with us too, so.
And this should be mentioned, the current morgue is six, can hold six bodies, and then there is an additional cooler system that has been brought in in the past by Betsy Johnson in order to handle the number of bodies that we're having. So the, the size on this is sixteen, so we're building this a little bit larger to sure that we have some growth capacity. And also, it helps us if we happen to have a mass casualty event, we'll have a little more space than we currently do to be able to handle that, depending on its scope, of course.
Any other questions?
Well, I think it's much needed, so we are responsible for bodies that families don't claim or pay for. A lot of people don't know that, but the county is responsible.
Yeah.
Building a morgue, I'm not complaining about that.
No.
It's a needed service here, they just, we need to work these logistics out.
Yeah, and we've been working on, on, looking at all those before we, we came back to Mr. Trout, we looked at a lot of that, and we'll have procedures in place for all that. We're working with Randolph too, if this does become a project, to work on getting some training from their folks on their experience. They've been running theirs for about five years now.
Larry, you're, you're a man of many skills.
It's one thing I never thought I'd be talking about in my life, was running a morgue.
Many skills, thank you.
Okay, the next one is the stretcher and power load equipment replacement. This is going to be needed in fiscal year twenty thirty-one, when all the current stretchers and power load equipment reach the end of their useful life. So this project is one point one million dollars, and that is one of the reasons why the allocation to the EMS Capital Reserve Fund is increasing. The next one is the Harney County Schools Child Nutrition Freezer and Cooler. They're asking to construct a four hundred pallet capacity freezer and cooler to store their food supply, and they need to do it, or go ahead and get started in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and it's going to be about four point three million dollars. They currently lease space from a facility in Sanford, and that lease is going to end, it was going to end at the end of June, but they were able to extend it through December. So they've looked at other options in the area, but there's nothing close by that they have found yet that would be reasonable. I think the closest one was in Greensboro. So we need to go ahead and make a decision on the child nutrition freezer cooler to get it started. We don't have a estimated time of how long it would take to construct it, so I know if it is approved, the lease will probably need to be extended a little bit longer. The next one is the Early College at Dunn relocation and renovations. Once the addition at Dunn Elementary is completed, the students that are in Wayne Avenue will move over to Dunn Elementary, and the maintenance department will be able to go in there and do the renovations they need there to get it ready for Dunn Early College. And that's requested in this fiscal year for five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and it's going to take about a year to complete. But really, it's going to depend on when the student, we're able to move the students over to get started. The next one is the Flatwoods Middle School, and this is seventy-eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. This is going to alleviate and help with the overcrowding at Harney Central Middle and Overheals Middle School. The land was purchased in twenty twenty-one. They want to get started with construction in twenty twenty-five to have the school ready to move into in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. The next one is the Lillington Shawtown Elementary School gym addition, and they'd like to do this in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and it's going to be about seven point three million dollars. They only have a multi-purpose room right now. I believe this is the only school in the county that does not have a gym.
You're right.
The next one is the Detention Center Body Scanner System. This is going to be grant-funded. We did receive the funds, the hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars requested for this project from the state, from an OSBM grant. The next one is the generator purchase and installation for the sheriff's office. This has actually been a future project for several years now, but it's, they had a study done in twenty twenty-two in order to get the cost estimate to get a generator that will run the entire building and, including the HVA system. Before, the nine one one center was the only one that was fully functional under the generator, so they need one that's going to run the entire building, and it was two hundred, or two point seven million dollars, and we did receive a grant for this. The next one is the core storage infrastructure upgrade and replacement. This is similar to the other project, which is the core server infrastructure replacement, but this one is on a five-year cycle, and it's for four hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. This is something we do now anyways, but we're incorporating it into the CIP. Do y'all have any questions on those new projects?
I'd like to make a couple of comments here at this point. So as we look at the projects that were mentioned for the school, the cooler freezer, the Early College, the Flatwood Middle School, and the Lillington Shawtown Gym, our intent is working with Kimberly to look at selling bonds in order to accomplish that. That is part of the, the commitment that we have with three hundred and twenty million that we have available over the next twenty years to assist with those projects. However, Kimberly is working as we close out projects, there will probably likely be some funds available as leftover funds when we close out the other projects from previous bond issues. The exact amount isn't known, because until we close out that project, we really don't know. I've heard figures anywhere from six to ten million from Kimberly. And so as we move forward, whatever amount we have left over from the proceeds will reduce the amount that we need to look at selling for bonds. So we won't know that amount specifically. The bond sale, I think with this timing, if the board approves the budget, we would be looking at summer to look at selling these bonds in order to do these projects. But this is part of the plan and will not, not cause us to need to increase our tax, taxes for this specific sale of these bonds, because we are paying off bonds, and this is part of the plan. So I wanted to comment, the actual dollar amount, if you add all these up and say, okay, that's what our bond sale's going to be, is not accurate, there will likely be a reduction in the amount that we need to sell for bonds for the total of these. But these are the priority projects that they have, and we feel that the timing is good on these in order to move them forward. So I think this meets some important priorities of the school.
Good question. In regards to schools, may have missed it, where's Highland High School at?
It's in the next phase. She'll cover that coming up in the next part of future projects, so.
So our future projects, these are the ones that we don't have a funding source for, we don't have a cost estimate, or we don't have a defined scope for these projects. And for most of these, the departments did not request that they be funded in the next fiscal year for the next, or over the next seven years in the CIP. So as we go through these, if you have any questions, I'm just going to kind of give you a status update as we go through these. The first one is Board of Elections. They're actually the only department that did request this one to move forward. They were part of the space needs study, but options are still being discussed on where we could put them based on their. we could put them based on their needs. So at this time, there's no recommendation to move this one forward. Next one is Central Carolina, their drainage system repair. There's no change in this project. They didn't request this project to move forward. Now, as we go through these, we know that at some point, these projects are going to move forward, and that's why we keep them in the future section of the CIP. So the next one is the courthouse shell space outfit, and that project was also part of the space needs study, but at this time, we're not moving it forward. Fleet maintenance facility improvements and replacement. We know at some point, we're going to need to to do something to help them, because they're running out of space as well. The Booys Creek Elementary School replacement, as of right now, they're still rated below their capacity, but it's expected to change over the next seven years, and it's classified as a tier two project by the Board of Education, and that means they need, they're needing it within the next two to three years. Next one is the custodial grounds and warehouse replacement. This was to replace the custodial warehouse buildings that was part of the property swap between the county, the school systems, and the town of Lillington. So right now, they are leasing space from the county at the warehouse over on Alexander Drive, and we'll move forward with this project when we've been able to identify a funding source, because the current cost estimate is about $6.6 million. The next one is the Lafayette Elementary School renovation project. Right now, it, there's no change in this project. We don't know what the what renovations actually need to be done right now, and no cost estimates have been obtained. The next one is the new South Harney, Lillington, and Highland High School. Right now, there's no change in this project. It's still classified as a tier one, and the estimated cost is $95 million. And so what we do is we get the direction from the school system of what projects are their priorities for the next fiscal year. So when I met with Steve Matthews and Brent had met with Dr. Fleming, they went through their priority list. And so what was a priority to them is what we moved forward in our recommended projects if we were able to fund those. The next one is the transportation maintenance facility replacement. This is also part of the property swap with the school system, the town, and the county. Right now, I don't think the property has been finalized between the school system and the county or between the school systems and the town of Lillington, because this is, what they're looking at is the property behind the current, the county's garage. So once that's finalized, we'll be able to get a better idea of when this project's going to move forward, but the current cost estimate is $14 million.
So they're looking at, excuse me, sorry. They're looking at land behind the current facility?
Well, the land behind the county garage over, um,
That's right.
I like to call it Prison Camp Road.
Oh, Prison Camp Road.
Yes, that land behind the county garage. So the land that the school system has right now, they are, they're not able to expand on the current land that they've got, because they've just got a very small transportation garage, and right now, I think they've got six bays, and they need 12 in order to meet their needs.
I understand what you're saying, that that kind of confused when you first mentioned it, because you're talking about the property there on, um, Meneal Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a timeframe on that?
No, I do not. And when I met with the school system at that time, he was not aware of it either.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is the Detention Center Housing Unit Addition. This was brought about in 2019, about building out the 55-bed addition, but right now, it's just recommended to monitor the local inmate. And so once we start exceeding that limit, we'll, that's when we'll bring it before you to add that addition. The next one is the evidence storage and crime scene processing bay. The department did not ask for it to be funded next year, because we're still trying to determine a location where this building can go. When they first looked at it, they wanted to build it in the same location where that 55-bed addition would go, so now we're trying to decide where it would best be located. The next one is the fuel tank replacement, and this project will replace and increase the fuel capacity for the tanks that are currently there. But right now, there's no change in this project, because we're waiting for the master plan to be completed at the jet port, because we're going to wait to see what their recommendations are. Same thing with the hangar development. We're also waiting to find out their recommendations on where these corporate hangar boxes can go. The runway expansion project, this is our only new future project. So this is going to construct a 500-foot extension to the runway, and this is the Jet Port Advisory Board's number one priority. We did receive $15.6 million from the state in a grant to help fund this, but depending on the scope of this project, it may cost more than that. So we're, until we know the exact scope of this project and how much more funding that we will need or won't need, that's when we'll move this project forward.
And that can be done at any point. We're talking about this project now as a future project, but as we get answers to those issues, we'll bring the project back before you. We can do that at any point as we go through a budget on any project. But that's our intent on this one. We need to finalize some more details related to the cost and what other possible funding sources we may have. We've been in discussion with DOA on the possibility of them helping us with the widening part, because we would like to do the widening at the same time we do the extension.
The next one is the Anderson Creek Park Development. These are the future phases. There's nothing, there's no change in this project, no new requests have been made at this time. Same thing with the Boone Trail Park Development, the future phases. Once we finish with the entrance way, then we'll move on to additional future phases, and so hopefully in the next year or two, we'll bring more of these forward. The Nils Creek Park roadway construction, there's no change in this project. At this time, we're waiting until the master plan is completed, and that's going to determine what we do about this project. The next one is the public library mobile outreach vehicle. The department did not request this to be moved forward in the next fiscal year, so there is no change in this project. Next one is the radio frequency identification installation in the branches, and this is just where we tag each of the books for self-checkout, and they can do a better job with inventory. But at this time, they're not requesting this to move forward next fiscal year either. And the last one is the Western Harney Service Expansion. So even though we're opening up the Ben Haven branch, we are keeping this one in the CIP as a future project, because with the growth in the western part of the area, we do know more libraries will be needed, but at this time, we're just not sure where it is needed, and they are working on their strategic plan right now. So hopefully, we'll have more information on that once that's complete. So do y'all have any questions for me about any of the projects?
Questions, comments?
Only only comment I'd like to make is it looks like they're already talking about combining or at least putting them on the same site for the school bus garage and the county garage, going and put animal control and all that in one facilities, one set of security, and surely there would be some costs that would go down there. Just an idea. Want to look for combining those and put them all in one spot.
Is there enough land there?
It may be we have to go to another site. I don't know.
I don't think it's enough land there, because I know the area. I'm not sure now. Don't don't poke me in sand.
They have to buy some more there or just, I don't know where the animal shelter is now. I don't know how much we own down there.
Yeah, I think in regards to the animal shelter location, that's something that we'll be bringing to you in in the near future. Well, once we look at, once the CIP is done as far as having a placeholder for the construction of the animal shelter, then we'll look to bring our options to you for site selection, and then let you choose the location, and then after that, we'll move forward with hiring a design firm, putting an RFQ out for that, and then after that, get the design started, so.
One of the things that was coming to mind was, and Brooke, you may be able to answer this, we're still putting buses every summer up in Harney Central.
We are.
We're going to build a facility. Go ahead and do it so we can secure those buses, because they get broken through every summer.
Yeah.
And we're talking about about 10 acres to accomplish that.
Yes, we'll look at, look at that possibility.
I think the former commissioners did take a, I was going to trip to, uh, took a trip to look at another site that would be suitable here for Harney to hold two buses as well as some of the county vehicles.
Yeah, if you put, if you put it all at one location, you got one tank farm for fuel, and everybody can use the old card system like we used to have at the county garage. Save some money.
A great idea, but you know, it's still some, it's a long time off. One question I had to ask you.
Okay.
Uh, social services department, that that second floor. We have favorite structure of the that second floor up, but we don't, we haven't finalized the inside of it. Is that not right?
Then it's correct. They're working on finalizing the design now.
Okay.
And that's, that's, they have finalized what they want for that space. The design has been sent to the architect to be finalized, should be put out. I would say they'll start working on specs, I would imagine, in the next two to three months. They'll have that design complete, be able to bid it. So I would expect within three months or so, we should see that project out for bid and completed by the end of next year.
But that will be just for the social services department, right?
Yes, yes. And it it creates something like 20 or so workspaces or staff, so it will be a nice size addition, additional break room. It's a nice design, conference room for the use by the director and deputy director for meetings, and then space, work, work cubicles for staff. So that should be, that'll be a nice improvement, given the number of staff they've had to hire with the Medicaid expansion and other just general numbers that they've been, that we've approved. They need the space.
They need the space, but I have one more question. Will the parking lot be redesigned or something, because, I mean, the parking lot is already full?
Yeah, it's pretty full. It is something that is contemplated in the space needs assessment that we did. I think we'll be all right for the initial, for that outfit, but if we add any more space, we will, we will have an issue. There is space in the far out. Most people fill the probably the first four rows during the day, but there isn't the one closest to the roadway. That one's typically empty, and you could look at putting staff in that location.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one comment, I I just want to thank Ms. McFadden and everyone who's worked on putting this plan together. I can tell you from my years of working with the school system, it's like a breath of fresh air to have a plan, whereas for so long, it was like we just bumped along and whatever emergency came up, we tried to figure out how to fund it. And and I say that because Mr. Matthews and several other folks comment to me every so often about how nice it is that that money that's set aside for capital projects, they know it's there, they know how much is budgeted, and they know where their needs are, they can start rather than reacting to emergencies and trying to, even though we're at the end of of lifespan, trying to milk that boiler or that chiller out for three or four more years, they can go ahead and make plans to replace it and not, and hopefully escape some of those emergencies, emergency situations we were having. So anyway, I thank you for that. I thank you for the former commissioners and their foresight to get this established. I think y'all have done a really good job of putting this together and getting, getting information from all of the places that and all the people who depend on that funding. And so I think it's a job well done. Like everything else, we could always use more money, but at least we've got a plan. And and when we, when, as my board of education folks tell me, if we just say, we know you don't have the money to do everything, but if you just tell us when, I think that goes a long way toward calming a lot of angst that occurs. Thank you so much.
I think we should give thanks to Kimberly and her staff, too, because they were the one that first worked on creating this. I want to give thanks to you.
I can, I can honestly say that the county has come a long way with the addition of Lisa. That's, that's a full-time job. Actually, it's a full-time job plus overtime award, just trying to work with the departments and the strategic plan that the county is developing. It is, it's one big picture. It's kind of like we pointed out to you during the budget retreat, that, that's when we're able to give you the big picture. But the county's come a long way, and it's taken the efforts of everyone. And I just want to personally thank, you know, Lisa for being so good to work with, Brent, especially you, the board, the previous boards, because, you know, it takes, it takes a while to get everything moving in the right direction. And I think now people should see, you know, everything coming together, and, you know, a lot of people had the vision, they were able to see the vision, so that's kind of where we are today. Still got a long way to go, but just like building the morgue, you know, the county's becoming independent. That's what we need to be is independent for our citizens. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. It is a, it's definitely a team effort. It's everybody working together to make this happen. So with that, we would like the public input next week to see if there's anything else that they would like to add or change. And then hopefully on December the 18th, we'll tentatively adopt the CIP so we can get it ready to kick off budget in just a couple of months.
Good deal. Thank you so much. So we'll go ahead and put a public input session on for next week's agenda, and then we'll go ahead and tackle this and vote on it December 18th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we will review applications to serve on boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm moved to put Mr. Ashley Dunn on the Board of Equalization and Review.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend George Thurman for District One.
Well, we have one vacancy for an at-large member, and we have five applications for consideration for appointment. I have a recommendation for Mr. George Thurman from District One, and Mr. Ashley Dunn from District Two. Are there any other recommendations according to considerations for appointment for the Board of Equalization and Review?
Mr. Chairman, I would say we move both these forward to next week and vote on, on these, between these two for this one position.
Any objection from the board to go ahead and add this as a separate line item, so we can discuss adding these two individuals to the Board of Equalization and Review? We'll go ahead and have a separate line item for next week for discussion, please, ma'am, these two individuals.
I just want to say that we have five candidates for that. Is this a district sensitive?
It's for an at-large position.
It's for at-large. I think Mr. Thurman is already appointed, serving a term on that board as a board member. Is that, Melissa, is that right, or is this a different board? His term is up till the end of the year?
Is that February?
Yeah, Mr. Thurman's term expires in February.
In February?
His is a district sensitive seat, yes.
Okay, so his does not expire right now?
Not currently, no. His expiration is in February.
Okay, so we don't even have to vote on him now, right?
Not till then.
No.
I think so.
I think his can wait till February, because his is a district sensitive seat.
But we could, in effect, go ahead and reappoint him to his seat, and then appoint one of these others to an at-large seat.
I'll defer to Chris on that.
Was this application for reappointment to his seat that's expiring?
Does our application specifically put at-large or for district when it gets advertised?
I have not seen his application.
Well, we got him right here. Dig around.
And, uh, Ms. Turk, uh, District Two was a di- a district-sensitive seat, um, as Ms. Turkot is coming off the board effective in January. Uh, Mr. Thurman comes off in February and then District Five has a district-sensitive seat coming off in February also. And then the two at-larges.
District One seat.
Maybe he submitted it early and we didn't catch that, so I was.
And by chairman, I would say is if the application isn't specific as to what they're applying for, then I would say, yes, the board could reappoint him for the expiring term coming up in February if that, if he chooses to do so or hold off until it gets closer to that time.
Well, I see no need in waiting, I mean, but, but I, I agree with whatever the board wants to be.
Would it be the pleasure of the board to go ahead and, and accept the application for Mr. George Thurman, but under the idea that we'll go ahead and extend him or reappoint him for his February term as it expires? And then as an at-large member, um, Mr. Ashley Dunn for appointment? Is there any objection to the board to, can we add that to the consent agenda for next week to approve both of those members?
I have no problem.
Is that legal?
Is that legal?
Yes, if you're looking at
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Dunn for the at-large, for that consent and then reappointment for a separate item, reappointment Thurman to the District One for the expiring term.
Can we add that to the consent agenda for next week? We'll go ahead and appoint Mr. Ashley Dunn as the at-large member and we'll go ahead and reappoint Mr. Thurman as the District One. Well, please. Outstanding. And there's several other vacancies that are on the board. I encourage commissioners to speak to some constituents and encourage them to participate. Right. Brings us to County Manager's Report, Mr. Trump.
I have nothing additional for today.
Do we have a need for closed session, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, we will be going to closed session for the following reasons. Uh, to consult with the county's legal counsel in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege concerning the handling of a certain case, namely Gray Wolf Homes LLC versus County of Hornet. Hornet County file number twenty-three C V zero-zero-four-zero-five-five dash four-two-oh and consultation with, and, um, instructions to the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating the terms of a proposed contract for the acquisition of real property.
A motion, closed session.
Aye.
A motion and second for closed session. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.
After a motion in closed session, we reconvene in open session. I'll call the meeting back to order and entertain the motion adjourned.
A motion and second to adjourn, we are adjourned.